I, Troy Hanson, having been elected to the Board of Education, school board, she wants to swear that I will see the board's constitution in the United States, the constitution of the state of Wisconsin, and the faithful and impartially discharge the duties of said office to the best of my ability to help you.
Thank you. And then sign now.
Jeanne, can I have a roll call members please?
Mrs. Will Hoffman is here. Mrs. Mary Miller?
Here.
Mrs. Sue Miller? Here. Mr. Leister?
Here.
Mr. Hamper?
Here.
Mr. Fisher?
Here.
Mrs. Grace Miller?
Here.
Moment of silence, please. Will you all please rise for the pledge of allegiance? Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Shouldn't we have verification of the verification of public notice?
Yes, sir.
All the comments, Hannah?
Hello, my name is Hannah Boltz. I'm here to speak on behalf of Tim Longdon and myself and Jeanne Krieger and a few other staff members. She just wanted to share a few things with you. School board members, after reviewing both proposed compensation models, the best interest of our district is to move forward with MRA. MRA requested more input from all major stakeholders. MRA outbid the number of higher number meetings and a longer timetable, potentially leading to increased discussion opportunities and collaboration between staff, administration, and school board members. MRA's proposal encourages staff participation. This will increase staff buy-in and support from the ground up. MRA presents a more likely tailored package, soon a more uniquely tailored package, by seeking stakeholder input, distributing surveys, compiling data, creating potential compensation models, seeking feedback, and adjusting to suggestions. Verisight's package expects staff and administration to complete a significant portion of the data, collection and compilation, spreading resources even thinner than status quo. I realize that Verisight has a smaller price tag, but I feel the old adage, penny wise and dollar foolish, fits the situation. Rushing the process to have a model in place should not be the desired outcome. Working together throughout the process with fair representation is essential to creating a compensation model to death and seek whether new hires applying for positions or maintaining the qualified, trained, professional educators already hired. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Yes, I'll come to your seat too. Although I'm used to standing.
Are you able to do this?
I don't know, I've been trying. You know, I'd like to start by thanking you all for the efforts in lifting up the anti-bullying campaign as a district. It was nice to see the sign that was hanging across the road. I saw them down there with torches earlier. I'm hoping the sign's going back up, but I don't know what the story is. Anyway, I also was thinking that clearly as you gather as a board, you swear in new people, there's also new opportunities before us. I think about my kids at one of their theater camps that always gave the kids the opportunity at the beginning of each day to offer challenges to the other students in their midst, and would be to challenge them to smile more, to challenge them to try and have a positive attitude. It strikes me that we've been really wonderfully blessed as a district to have this partnership between community groups, and particularly for us in churches and the clergy, as we've talked about character education programs, as we've now talked a little bit about bullying, as we look forward to what those ongoing partnerships are. And I would love to offer the challenge to this board and indeed the district to keep that positive attitude that says, how do we keep the children at the center of the conversation and their education? We have watched lots of conversations take place in all kinds of settings across the district, everything from, as I hear, Facebook and letters to editors and newspaper articles, and certainly what we've witnessed just even here as a school board. I think that as we keep talking about the expectations we would have for children, students, that we need to set that example. You guys have a wonderful opportunity as the board to set an example of the kind of citizens that we would like our students to become. I would say that that's true for the faculty and for all the administrators, and I'd say it's true for the rest of us in the community as well, that if, well, I guess going back to my more familiar vernacular, if all we're doing is preaching and we're not actually living it, our words are going to speak not nearly as loudly as our actions. And so, one of the things that has been, again, a challenge to watch is to say perhaps that challenge not to watch even votes around the board be so divided. How is it that when you disagree, you listen to one another? You listen to one another and seek consensus? In the boards that I serve on, when we have a vote where there's even one dissenting voice, we look at that and we see that as being a failure, that we haven't managed to all come to a place where we understand where one another, where one another is. That's not where we've been as a board. Part of what I would challenge you to is to figure out how as you elect a new president of the board, as I understand it, part of that role is that role of being the peacekeeper or the one that would re-center a committee to say, let's remember why we're here. Lots of committees that I serve on, that role is that, we'll name them as a chaplain or the person that sometimes simply says, look, we just need to take a minute of silence. Because sometimes that person serving on the board doesn't have the right words either. But if you all have agreed in advance to that commitment to just silently reflect on what you all are here to be about, and all of you have committed a great deal of time and energy to education. So I would challenge you, as you start a new journey, there's only one person different, but hey, it's as good an opportunity as any to remember that this journey we're on is one that ought to be focused on education, ought to be focused on the teachers and the administrators and all the things that make that happen. Use them. You've got these great resources, these professionals that you've chosen, you've hired, you've highly trained. One of the things that I hear here, just like in other committees that I serve on, are lots of really good intentioned folks trying to figure things out for themselves instead of turning to the experts and saying, would you tell us what the real, the best practice or the best wisdom is? You've got a lot of best practice and wisdom around you, take advantage of it. So, thank you for the chance to speak to you, and I certainly will be continuing to pray for all of you as we move forward as a district and as tonight you select a new board president.
Move to agenda corrections or deletions? Where is he?
Item 10, policy 1A, yeah. The president distributed the board's, that's the form. It's got the same data on it as the one in our, on our website, but it's a different, it's been changed.
That's the series 101?
185F.
Yep.
You said it, it's policy 185, 185F, the form has been changed from what it reads on the website. And I wasn't aware that anybody had changed it, or nobody said anything to the board that they were changing it. So I don't know who changed it.
I did. I'll take responsibility for that. The standing committees in the 185 policies talks about the three standing committees. It does not talk about ad hoc committees and setting them at this time.
I know, but...
So the form, which is not a board policy, was incorrect, in our opinion. So we changed the form to reflect what the board policy was.
But it still should have been brought to the attention of the board.
And that would have been brought up tonight.
Because it's the original that's on the website has, was approved January 14th. Here it says approved January 14th.
Right, and we're gonna...
Different forms.
We're gonna talk about that. So I apologize for not letting you know ahead of time, but it matches up with what the board policy is. Those other two things that were taken off were ad hoc committees.
Well, I realize that, but I mean, when I was on the ad hoc committee for human growth and development, and when I first came on the committee, nobody had looked into anything for six years. So in a way, maybe some of these standing committees should be on there so that there's oversight to see if any new statutes come up or whatever is happening. So if it's arbitrarily taken off, then that would have gotten that.
Isn't, I get a question.
Yeah.
Doesn't it come through the OLA? The updates of policy approval and development?
Human growth and development has already been approved, but not the forms that go along with it for the rules.
But it will, it should be addressed through the OLA. It will be correct?
It has to be addressed, yes, yes. But for all purposes tonight, you just can't change anything. And there also, item 11A, instructional resignation, in the agreement and release, it says that part of this agreement is appendix A, and there was no appendix A yet to change.
Correct. And Heather asked a safer question, and from legal counsel, the signed document replaces appendix A, which is basically the letter of resignation. So because she signed the actual agreement, that takes the place of appendix A. But I have a copy of appendix A if you want to see it. I brought it along.
Can we move that into closed session as long as we're going to talk about...
That's up to you.
I would like to move that into closed session.
So you want to move 11A, consent agenda, 11A into 14D?
Yes.
And then, number 10, we'll leave the board policy, whether you find it or not.
Well, we'll discuss it.
So I need a motion to approve the agenda with the change of 11A moving to 14D.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda, 11A moving to 14D.
Motion by Sue, and a second by Heather. All in favor? Please say aye.
Aye.
Close. Number nine, the organization of the school board, I'd like to have a close ballot, please, for the positions.
Written?
Yeah. You okay with that?
I am, yeah.
I'd like to open up the election of the board president, and I'd like to nominate Mr. Fisher.
I appreciate you doing that, but I'm gonna say no, no thank you to, but I have to, I've got a whole lot to learn, and it's flattering that you do that, but...
Heather left, didn't bother you, and I heard you go.
I appreciate it, but let me get used to that. I'm just glad to be here.
I'd like to nominate Troy Hanson for president.
I'll nominate Heather A. Lawson. Any other nominations? I need a motion to close.
I move that nominations be closed.
I have a motion, do I have a second, please? I'll second it. All in favor? Aye. Nominations for the board president are closed.
Four for Troy, two for Heather.
Aye.
Four for Troy, three for Heather.
Okay, well, thank you for that election. Now moving on to the election for board vice president. Open up to nominations.
I'd like to nominate Sue Miller for vice president.
I'd like to nominate Jim Meister for vice president.
Any other nominations?
I move that nominations be closed.
I'll second. All in favor? Aye. Close.
Four votes for Sue Miller, three for Jim Meister.
Okay, we'll be going to my seat, election for clerk, opening up nominations. I'd like to nominate Grace Miller, please.
I nominate Mary Miller.
Any other nominations? Can I make a motion to close nominations? All in favor? Aye.
Make the motion and second.
I made the motion.
I made the second.
So second it.
Mary, Grace, three.
Okay, opening up nominations for election for board treasurer. Any nominations?
I nominate Jay Fisher.
I nominate Grace Miller. Any other nominations?
I move that nominations be closed.
I'll second. All in favor? Aye. I have to be opposed.
Jeanne, did you nominate?
Yes, please.
Did I miss the motion?
You're in the motion. You're opposed, you're seconded.
Jake Fisher for Grace Miller, two.
Okay, that closes up item number nine, moving on to item 10, policy 1A 5F.
As Grace pointed out, the board policy 185 says that there are three standing committees, and throughout the Neola process, we've made a lot of changes on the run, and we have tried to make our committees work more in unison with our public and our community, and we changed a lot of things around over the last few months. And so as we looked at board policy 185F, and Jeanne handed it and showed it to me, looking over the board policy and form 185F, they weren't matching up together. So I will take my responsibility to lining up form 185F with the caveat that we were going to talk about it tonight, and that it does match up with the board policy. The other two things to see surrounding the WASB are not committees, but regular assignments that are given out when we would go over the committee structure. If that was incorrect, I apologize, and if you would like to put all the ad hoc committees onto this form, then I would suggest not only the ones that were there, that any other ad hoc committees that are now functioning should also be added at that time. So it's up to you.
I think if we had a list of what we had and have, we don't have the active, the add, so it's, you know, such a thing. We've talked about this before, that if we need it, we're inactive, we don't, so it's here at the sideline. At least you know what we have.
A listing?
Right, just a listing if not, you know.
We can definitely put a listing together.
Obviously, if we don't need it, we're not gonna sign up for it, because there's nothing to do for it for me, but...
And we can just have a listing without having people sign up for it specifically.
Right, that's what I'm saying, if we get...
All I was trying to do was match up the policy form.
Right. I'm just saying, if we have a list of what we all have out there, that we could be using if we have to use it. Should that be a separate document, I guess would be my question. It's a committee thing. I mean, it's not like it's gonna be, it might be listed on here, but that doesn't mean that we're gonna assign people to it, because they're not doing anything.
They're really not specific board committees, some are ad hoc, some are not.
Why not?
They're just a function of, and many times the committee, people ask the board that it's participating, but it's not really a designated board committee.
Well, an ad hoc committee is, the power of the board is given to a committee to do research or whatever. Right. If you're a board member and you're asked to be on a different committee, you're not really representing the board at that time, you're just a board member that's on a different committee.
I don't know, we got this form, it's really just looking for our interest level. And so to have those listed there and then to identify if you do have interest, should something else for an ad hoc committee, I don't think that's happening.
Well, if the change comes in, like I say, we can go from the old, change takes place. Maybe we just go right to that, because we're adding and removing off of this form. Because ad hoc committees are listed in the policy, not the specific ones, but I agree that it should be.
The question in my eyes is, do we want to handle it on the 185F, or do we want to have a separate form for those? Because they're not main committees, they're optional, they're accessory committees.
It should be on the 185, 185F form.
I agree, from a perspective of, when this process is happening, when we're reorganizing, it's good for brand new board members to see results there, especially. You just see ones that are super bad, Eric. You just see what's up there.
We just have a separate category, we can use the same form, we've got a separate category on here, stating ad hoc committees.
Just have them listed on the title.
Which makes a lot of sense. Now I just need to know which ones you want to put on.
Which ones we have?
Well, that's a good question.
Wellness, wellness, G T, G T.
You've got wellness, you've got T T, you've got special education, you've got insurance, you've got salary and compensation, you've got...
Why don't we just, for now, why don't we just leave it as it was approved in January of 2013?
Can I make changes to where it was?
Because it doesn't reflect the policy, that's why.
It doesn't match policy, so I disagree with what you're saying, Grace. What I recommend we do is, why don't we address these first? We could, we could address the addition of the ad hoc committees onto the next meeting and then clarify the form going forward. So we have this piece, then we have a separate piece for the others. Let's do it in two stages. Cover the, the main was, it was a mandatory first, and then pick that up on the May 12 agenda. That sound palatable?
So basically, we're gonna have the 185F on the next agenda, and we'll make the adjustments for add-ons at that point.
I would say we would hand this out now to address this, so we can bring our selections back, so we keep the process moving. Bring this back to the May 12. On May 12, review the ad hocs as a separate, I guess even a separate piece to the 185F, and then that way we can hand that out and then address that at the next meeting, we will do June, the, in that range.
I guess what I was thinking, is if we adjust the documents itself within the house, that we can bring it up next month. So we have, let's talk about that in addition to...
True, that's true. Let's handle that, let's handle that, get that approval or review on the next meeting, so then we can add our answers back.
Exactly.
Right, you know, except for...
So you want to, you don't want to, you don't want to set committees in May, you want to wait until June to set committees?
No, I think we should set these committees in May. And set the ad hocs in June.
So I will send out to the board a list of where we think we are ad hocs, and then you can add on to it, so when we come to the next meeting on the 12th, we'll have a list for you to look at.
And then, right, and then for expedience sake, because we lose the next Monday to Memorial Day, June 13th the next, I would say we want to have our selections, cover that in the meeting briefly on June 13th, so we're not into them, we end it June or July. Distributing that?
Yep. Can you do that on the 12th?
Should I just distribute?
Jeanne, can you put a big terminal, so we have, sending out listening ad hocs?
So does, I need to do instruction steps, or that we should do, get this, that we get them back to you to meet, or do you have one?
Good point. Why don't, why don't we get these back, let's go out a week, okay, so you can, let's get these to meeting within the week, the next Monday, close the business next Monday, you have questions on 185F? Okay, let's close that, moving on to consent agenda. I move to approve...
Second.
The discussion, and we're looking to approve 11B and C, as 11A got moved on to 14D. And we're looking to approve 11B and C, as 11A got moved on 14D. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? I think we should have a little bit of lights with buttons on it. Red is first, green is second. Hey Doug, can you look on that? Moving on to number 12, whole business, salary compensation vendor. Okay, once you lead off the question.
For the last 4B, we were asked to get lists of references. And Verisite gave us a list, and it was similar to the list that they had mentioned when we met with them. And we get clarification from MRA with their list of references. And from what we can put together, and in all fairness, Vicky Plachitsky and Julie and myself split up some of the reference calls. We called about a dozen total places and heard back from about half of those places about both companies. And I would say that both, and start off with both companies, there wasn't anything negative to say about either company. So starting with that as a baseline, there wasn't anything negative about either company. I quite honestly would say that Anna kind of touched on it. I mean, that's pretty much the difference, is that MRA, it's a six-month process, it's a bi-weekly process. They put a lot of time, they organically grow it. It is built on the culture of the district, and it's built on a lot of communication with a lot of different people. The Verisite is one that has forms that have been used before and models that have been used before. It's less time, and it's more about, here's the models that we have, and you go out and you do half of it, and we do half of it. Paul Edmondson at Campbell's Court School did a lot of work to save on costs. They did about, he feels that they did about half the work. Fond du Lac, where Verisite was up to, teachers were upset, there was a lot of mistrust. Verisite interviewed a lot of teachers, focus groups were held. They presented the plans that would work, their ideas, you know, they presented to all people. So it worked up in Fond du Lac, it didn't necessarily work as well in Campbell's Court because they did more of the work for Verisite. And then they put, Fond du Lac said, it really depends on what your company wants to do, or what your school district needs. South Milwaukee was the third one that we got ahold of about Verisite. Verisite, they talked about different levels of involvement, the more you want, the more you can get, the more costs. They held focus groups, this didn't go well because the teachers had met prior to come up with a line that they were going to file, and they were not going to budge. Verisite, so I guess it's not really Verisite's fault, but they went away from Verisite, they went and did their own compensation model, but had nothing negative to say. Kind of it was their culture in the situation we walked into. MRA, we were able to get a hold of two of their three references. Elm Brook, Brookfield, they started in May, and they thought they were, did a very intense time. And they are planning on finishing up, excuse me, they started in January, want to finish in May. It was very good, very intense, they met weekly, good communication sessions. They were a great resource. Dan, the HR person in Elm Brook, one of the phone calls I took, quote-unquote, wouldn't have pulled it off without them. They, the thing that attracted MRA to them was, they do a lot of the prep work, they do a lot of the costing, they do a lot of the research. The other one for MRA that we got ahold of was Peewaqui. We talked to Susan Mentor, the HR director. I believe Vicky talked to Peewaqui. And they had, just got a whole page from Peewaqui. Very, very positive, very responsive, listened well, have nothing but positive things to say about it. Said eighty percent of their staff attended sessions. So the general consensus, or the, I guess the transforming truth on it is, I think both of them are good companies. I think Verisite's more of, if you want to do the work yourself and you want us to kind of guide you the way, then we're the company for you. MRA is more of, very much more hands-on. If you're starting it with nothing, we'll help you build into something, and we'll organically grow it. That's kind of the two difference. So it all depends on what you feel this district needs. And I would recommend that what Anna said is what administration would also say.
Can I ask a question? On the salary compensation vendor comparison, where could actually these staff members come from compared to? Because I look through my correspondence that was passed out by MRA that they were there, and I didn't see anything about hours of that. How did this comparison get arrived at?
It was on the phone, Julie just told the shoes, got it on the phone.
Oh, okay. I happened to talk with Dan Olson today, and he was very pleased with Verisite. He said they do Campbell's Court, and now that he's in Menona Grove, they were just in the process of going through a compensation vendor. And they chose Verisite for, in Menona Grove also, and it's very pleased with it. And you're right, the workflow is different, but then the cost is different also. But both districts are very pleased with their Verisite. Now, also, is this just the teachers that they're talking about here? That's not...
Both groups, yes.
It is both support?
No, it's for both companies.
Both companies are just for teachers?
Yep.
So we don't have any figures yet around what it would be for support?
Right.
So that could be quite a bit higher.
Well, Verisite did not have anything for support staff. That's why we took it out of MRA. And that's what we told you that last time here together, that we took it out of MRA's proposal, had to come back because Verisite did not fit on that part. So we're trying to compare apples to apples.
Do you remember what the volume was for the support staff?
It...
For MRA?
MRA, frankly, it's a hundred and fifty dollars an hour for how many hours you're going to use. So it's whatever, how many hours you think it would take, you times that by a hundred and fifteen, that's their flat rate.
So they didn't have a general set number of hours or rough estimate of number of hours for support staff to manage?
No, the reason that we originally, and I think Heather was yours suggesting that, long as we're getting people together, why don't we get everybody together and kill two birds with one stone? And the company, the two models are so different that it really doesn't accomplish that. So we took that out of MRA. And I would say, again, whether it was ten or fifteen thousand dollars to do that, it would be the... I think it would be kind of similar, no matter what company you go with, it's going to be based on how many hours it takes.
So if we were to approve MRA, if we're with that, is that still an option? Just still ask them to show us, is it worth, or you already have the numbers for that?
I would say that we'd have to ask him a separate one, because quite frankly, that seems to be, through the research, that you'd want to have separate meetings with that group, and you can't fix it to meetings.
It seems to kind of allude to the idea that there are some things that could be done, if you don't have it all, so...
Could be.
I think we would learn something about the process, that my recommendation would be that we handle the teachers first, learn the process. And then I think we might have some information to use to carry over to the support staff, and possibly save some dollars ever, because we understand some of the process they went through. Instead of all of one fell swoop, saying we just completely reorganized the support staff two years ago, less than two years ago.
Because I was just looking for the cost comparison part, so that we can make an educated decision, we could move forward with it with support or without, so that we have the numbers in front of us. Because if it's eight thousand dollars, eight thousand dollars is a lot of money, but still, it's maybe less than we would, than we'd all be on. Anna, Karen, is that the best we can do? I would still like to see the comparison.
We don't have any comparison to compare against.
But I'm saying, even just with MRA, I'd like to see our total here with MRA, and then if we were to add on the support staff, what that would be.
I think you're talking two different situations with support staff. We have more outside measurement tools that we can use. And I think we have made a, I think we need to prioritize, in my opinion, to look at dollars. This is longer, I hope you have one for everybody. That's why I always want to say that. So I think what we're looking at here is, we're looking at the educator side of this equation. And I think we can do this in two-step process, but also don't want to overload, try to cover... I think covering the whole of those at once is a bit of a reach, in my opinion. That's my...
There's a considerable difference between the two.
Well, that... And that's another situation, is where are we going to come out on hours? If we approve, if we would approve, because MRA is, does this, does Verisite even do this? I'm not sure for support staff. If they do, if it's an hourly issue, and we approve a number, if we have excess left over, could we word it such that it would then cover support staff if we had funds left over? Any input on that? If we're building a salary compensation model, we don't have to, I guess, be specific. Had it just be educated, but if we have extra dollars left over, any thoughts?
You're saying if we were to go with Verisite?
We'll figure it, either one of them.
So we would set a budgetary amount, period? And maybe if there's twenty left over, then it would go towards the support staff? That's interesting.
Correct. That's an option, if we can...
Because for the next part of this, we've built twenty-five thousand dollars, or is it twenty-five thousand five hundred and fifty, into the budget for this. So we didn't twenty-five thousand, we didn't put in thirty-one thousand five fifty. We put in twenty-five thousand five fifty, because we're confident that we're a little bit smaller of a district than Elm Brook and Peewaqui, that we can maybe get done a little bit quicker. So we get past, we get to twenty-five, and we have to come back to the board and ask for more. But I'm fairly confident that we can get it done.
Well, that makes it a little bit different now when you weigh it out, because now you're only talking about the five thousand dollar difference. Yeah, unless you were going too short, Verisite, if you have a budget of twenty grand with that, you could use a budget of fifteen for them.
Well, in all honesty, I don't know that a hundred and ninety-seven hours is needed, but yet I don't think fifty hours is enough. So you got fifty hours for twenty grand, you got a hundred and ninety-seven hours for thirty-one five fifty. So to try to commonsensually come up with a total, we sat down and looked at it and processed it, and we think that maybe we can get it done in a hundred and seventy-five hours instead of a hundred and ninety-seven. And they only charge you for the hours you need. So if we do twenty-two hours less, that's a hundred and fifty times twenty-two hours, and...
When they... Thank you, go ahead.
I was going to say, I come from a world where there are negotiations going on. And so in many ways, you can say, hey, this is our budget, even though you have given, if we're over there, we have to go back to board. Can you say, possibly, if we chose MRA, that, hey, this is our budget?
Yes, I think anything's possible.
The other question I have is, Verisite, there was one person, MRA, there was three. So the hourly rate was at times three, we have three people, and two people, and wasn't...
It's not, they usually have two people, the third person that shelled was the boss of the other two. So she's not going to be part of it, it's just the two. So it's a hundred and fifty dollars an hour for each one of them.
So it's three hundred bucks an hour.
If they're both here, yes.
Okay, a couple thoughts, yes?
If the recommendation is MRA, why don't we just take MRA and cap at a twenty-five dollar?
That's an option. I'm looking at the number side of it, Dr. Ray. Here's what it comes to, if we would take the same budget, or same dollar per hour with MRA, you get eighty hours out of Verisite for thirty-one five fifty. Or you flip it around, and you go twenty-five five fifty, which is what the budget was, is a hundred and seventy hours with MRA. Twenty thousand is a hundred and thirty-three hours with MRA, which is two hundred and sixty-seven percent more hours than Verisite was going to give us. So there's something to chew on as far as value proposition and/or just some options of how this would fall. So with that being the case, I would think that would be something to strongly consider as we look at this. Because even if you compare apples to apples, it's a hundred and seventy, it's a hundred and thirty-three hours versus fifty hours.
So I would suggest that Chase can make a motion based on what he said, and that would give us a hundred and seventy hours, and then that would go into what you said, and we'd cap MRA at a hundred and seventy hours.
And why don't we put the caveat that if there is hours left, we would bring it back to have the discussion on how we would apply those? Do we put those back in the budget? Do we start the support staff process out of those ones?
How do you guys feel about the support staff ended this? Are you comfortable with the idea of doing just the teachers? Or do you want to do everybody all at once, and what are your thoughts? It's mostly been Troy and you talked about that, so...
Well, there was just a complete reorganization of support staff, people with the grounds or someone. It hasn't been studied with the teachers, so to do it all might be too much, might be overwhelming. So we want to make sure it's done well. So I think we talked about having the teachers done first and see what happens with that, and go from there.
So more input along that line is...
No, no, that's not finished.
Is also three years ago, or in that same, two and a half years ago, there was some salary changes done for night staff, night cleaning staff, that didn't go so well. And it went down, and then we were having problems, so we moved it back up. So there actually have been kind of two modifications to the schedule in the past thirty to thirty-six months. Probably, probably, I know it's a... So that's another piece of the puzzle, that I think we have the ability and the luxury to prioritize teachers and then come back to support staff once that process is completed, because we've done our work with the support staff twice in the past thirty-six months. Your motion was, I'd like to make the motion, since it recommends that we use MRI, or MRA, and cap it at twenty-five thousand, and Jim tries to see if he can get teachers and support staff to that price. I'll second that. Any other discussion on that issue?
So we do the teachers, if there's any money left over, then we start the support staff. We don't concurrently do them.
No.
Twenty-five thousand, if there's any money left over, then we take that money and we go right to the support staff. And start that process.
Let's assume we are with what's left, not that we get halfway on the project, we ain't got the money to finish it.
Right.
Regardless, I think you should come back.
Yep, okay.
Here, we got a first, we got a second, any other discussion? Because it's dollars, I think you can do a roll call, Board Chief.
Can I have the second?
Troy.
Hi, Troy.
Mrs. Alaba? Yes. Mrs. Mary Miller?
Yes.
Mrs. Summella? Mr. Reister?
Yes.
Mr. Hanson?
Yes.
Mr. Fisher?
Yes.
Mrs. Miller?
Okay, pass the sixth one. On to item 12B, this is for some budget review. Let me get some more numbers. Let me get some more numbers.
Uh, I just wanted to share with you in January, so you know, three year one-year budget in April. Um, we're going to be tag teaming Mr. Smuzzle and I, because I have the numbers, but he has the background of how we've actually worked. We're going to be taking you down a path and it's going to twist around a little bit. So I think I want to ask you a whole question until the end, because I'm feeling that most of your questions are going to be answered along the way, even though we're twisted and turned a little bit. We'll see how that goes. Then there's going to be a handout, which you will receive at a strategic place in the presentation, because that's one of the twists in the... And the one thing you need to know is that this is a lot more information than you're used to receiving at this time of year. Usually you're working on probably your budget deficits. We're really pleased at how far we've come in this short period of time, and so we felt it was time to share the information with you. But you also need to know that this is a very drafty draft, we made a lot of assumptions and there's still a lot of unknowns. Okay? Okay. We all know we have to start with the revenues. We've said that, we've had this conversation multiple times. We know that we've got an increase in the per pupil amount of the revenue limit of seventy-five dollars per pupil. How do we know that? Because we have a two-year state budget and this was the first year and next year's the second year. So we know that ahead of time. This time next year, we might come to be coming to a full guesswork, but for this, we had a good start. What we don't know and what we're assuming is what our summer membership and our fall memberships can be, because this is going to be a, this is going to be a formula that includes the per pupil amount and enrollment. But we shared with you in December that we believe that we're going to see a decrease of almost two hundred thousand in our living limit. We also know that there's going to be a per pupil adjustment increase of seventy-five dollars per pupil and that will give us an increase of a hundred and thirty-nine-five. We also have a couple of tweaks in the other revenues, mostly Medicaid, how we book it, not that we're getting it anymore, but it's telling us to put it in a different place. And then we have a little bit of an increase per pupil for open enrollment tuition, and so we know that. And that's the balance of our other revenues. So the net impact is going to be a decrease of a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. That's just the revenue side, but that's all that we're concerned. This is just the picture you see every year of where our funding limit has gone over the years. Since two thousand nine-ten, we've seen a decrease of over one point seven million dollars. And we're seeing a decrease again this year. Me too.
Those are hard to read.
They're little numbers?
So it's like, what, you could tell me two ninety-two or something? It's going down?
It's going down the, yeah, almost three hundred thousand.
Almost three hundred thousand.
That was around here, the one with seven million, did it?
Uh, from nine-ten, yeah. So that's one, two, three, four, six, seven? Actually, five. And we'll be talking about this in a lot more detail later on, when we get the full, I think we'll give you a full workshop on this. So first you start out with the revenues and we saw that decrease of a hundred and thirty-five thousand. And then you have to add all the increases that you know. And these are the things that we've been sharing with you since, like, January, one at a time as we find them out. We knew that we were going to build a one point four, one point four percent, one point four-six percent, and cannot say that. CPI wage increase was fringes and we gave it to you a long time ago. It was supposed to be a starting point for our conversation, it's like a placeholder that we put in there. We knew that student transportation was going up because we had year two of a contract that had been negotiated. We knew that our property insurance, casualty insurance, the insurance was going up, it was bad news based on workers' comp. Most of these things you knew about. The staff development, you learned about, oh, that's the literacy piece that Mr. Smuzzle's been communicating with you. But most of these pieces you knew before tonight. So there shouldn't be any surprises. So the total on this page right here is about four hundred and thirty thousand. So if you take that four hundred and thirty thousand, you add it to that decrease in revenue of a hundred and thirty-five, we're looking at total budget cuts of five hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars. A little over half a million. So then you have to identify what you made to the cost, your decreases. And what we came up with was the bulk in staffing and Mr. Smuzzle's going to explain how we got to that. We had to make cuts in technology and then there was a bunch of miscellaneous things that added up to that. Okay, so now you get a handout. Okay, you can look at your summary, all the funds side. Look at your summary, all funds side, which should be fairly familiar to you, if you've ever heard of it. And then these are the pieces that we're going to go through. So remember our general fund is our operating fund. We combined that with Fund Twenty-Seven, but the only piece that fits this is the inter-fund transfer and we're going to talk about that on the next slide. So we're showing a balanced budget in fourteen fifteen in the general fund with that negative one thirty-five, two seventy-four, which ties back to the increase in the revenues. Okay, special education fund. Our goal in this fund is to not increase the impact on the general fund budget, so we're going to be focusing on that inter-fund transfer. If this budget goes up, it's because we know the revenues are going to go up. Otherwise, we're going to try and hold it tight. We're not going to do that by cutting programs, we're going to use it by wisely using those buckets we're always talking about. We're going to maximize the use of the Medicaid, we're going to maximize the use of the federal tax, that type of thing. Remember, special education is not a long-term balance and so what happens is you've got your expenditures and part of those expenditures are covered by revenues and the rest of it has to be moved over to the general fund, which was at first free. That's the number we're trying to hold. Debt service fund thirty-eight, remember that's our non-referendum debt? That's the debt we have to pay for within our revenue limit. We had two notes issued a couple of years ago, one in two thousand eleven, it was a million dollars to, I think, pay off some existing higher interest debt and the balance was used for capital improvements. That'll be paid off in two thousand nineteen, you've got three hundred and fifty thousand down right now. The other was a note for one point seven-two-five million in two thousand twelve and that was to pay off that WRS liability. Couldn't move everything except that, that was a wise choice, because the impact on that was really high. And remember on the debt service funds, you're never going to have it even, even on the bottom, it's not going to come out balanced. You're either going to have a surplus or deficit. And that's because we have to book our expenditure based on the fiscal year, but we have to tax for everything we owe on a calendar year. So the timing and such is that you're going to have this off a little bit every year. And you're going to see it as a deficit, because our principal, our interest payments are going down, so we don't have to tax as much. So it's a good thing. This payment is fairly stable from last year. When I was looking at the debt schedule, it looks like all of them were sort of evened out, so that we wouldn't see any big change from year to year. Just hold on.
And Fund Thirty-eight is?
Non-referendum debt. Remember on the non-referendum debt, that means that when we pay it off, it gets to come back into our funds and we can use it for other things. Fund Thirty-nine, referendum debt, we pay it off, it just means that the tax letting goes down. We don't get that money anymore. This was borrowed for the Ombre Construction Remodeling Projects. The principal payment on this one is going up every year because the interest payment is going down every year, but the payment overall then stays the same. And we're going to see this paid off in two thousand nineteen also. Fund Fifty is our fund service fund, they're self-sufficient. I actually have been hearing some other districts talking to each other, because not every district wants a self-sufficient fund service fund, but ours does. She doesn't really know what program. And so when we built this budget, we estimated that revenues were going to go down. That means that we're going to build a budget that's based on those revenues. We're going to have some more accurate numbers in July and August, we get to see where the revenues come in this year. Once again, therefore, we're going to start. The community service fund eighty, this one was kind of weird this last year. Do you guys remember where we had to build a surplus budget this year? Because it ran a deficit two years in a row and we had to clean it out? Well, it did it, well, it was supposed to do, we're going to come out and get it at the end of this year. And so when we build next year, it's going to be a balanced budget again. So that means that our revenues are going to come down, our expenditures will just sort of stay the same. We'll have more detail on this later in the year also. Okay, all funds combined. Now, if you were to go through all those screens that I went through and tried to add them up, it would come up with a number much higher than this. But you'll get to see on the bottom of yours that we reduced it by the inter-fund transfer. We have to do that, otherwise we're counting it twice and it's also inflating your numbers. So this is the total number of all funds combined minus the inter-fund transfer for all of our budgets. And we're seeing that the increase is going to be, or the decrease is going to be less than one percent, but it is going to be a decrease overall across the budget. And it's not going to be in balance because of those debt service funds. Okay. Now we thank you. Do you want to switch your people to the other side? We didn't bring you detail on all the budgets tonight, because we're working on a lot of them. Later in the year, we'll get more and more as it becomes available to us. But for tonight, we are bringing you some general fund detail. Usually when we present information to you on the financial accounting, we bring it to you in one of two forms. Remember object, what did we buy, for function, what did we use it for? We give you the object on that financial summary that you see every month, we show you what we're buying every month. We give you the functions when we're giving you the formal budget to approve. Well, tonight we decided to do something a little funky and do a hybrid. Because neither one is very understandable, neither one ever really answers all your questions. So we're going to combine and we give you something, we call it, we chunked it out in the categories that we hope will make sense to you. We'll still give you the real stuff, the official stuff, when we have to, but we kind of want to make this a little bit. So the first line item is salaries and fringes.
Well, you can see that there's two hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars less in salaries and fringes. That number, this twelve million seven thirty-two, does include the CPI of one point four-six, increase of a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars. And if you look at your page, you'll see the increases. The other thing that you might want to star is the Wisconsin retirement contributions of twenty-nine thousand four hundred and eighty. So if you take two fifty-four, the one sixty-five and the twenty-eight four eighty, on the decreases of staffing, on the bottom of that page, you'll see staffing went down four hundred and forty-eight thousand five seventy-five. That's how we got to that number. So what does that mean? That means that we've done some changes. And looking at staffing for next year, we've got some changes that we want to make and some eliminations of some positions. So very simply, we have three elementary positions that we hope to decrease. The attrition, we don't have kids. We don't need the teachers. We have less kids than we did a few years ago. So the attrition is three less elementary school teachers and two less support staff people. Probably the more famous of the two is Karen Kissinger, as you know, is leaving next month and we're looking to revamp the high school office area and I give them credit for thinking outside the box and trying to make something work. So we have three positions there, the two support staff, and then the reconfiguration of the technology department also led to a significant savings. And that's a credit to the gentlemen that were in that department, who did a fantastic job of getting our infrastructure up to speed and, you know, they should be thanked for that. Now, the changes we want to make internally, that go in with the staffing that fit within that twelve million seven hundred and thirty-two, is the first one, as I just mentioned, Karen retiring and not filling that role. With that, we would also like to move Jason Pittman to a dean slash athletic director into a personnel directorship. So he would not be teaching any classes, he would be the seven through twelve athletic director as well as a dean of students, more specifically at the high schools. And that change can happen because we don't need to hire any other FIAID teacher. We lost some FIAID numbers and we can fill it with the existing staff. And as well as some of the cost savings of Karen's job and not having to hire somebody to be the athletic director at the middle school, we were able to massage the budget and have that. One of the big reasons why, there's two big reasons, we want to give Jason an opportunity to do more evaluation of our co-curriculum programs as well as free up Christine to do more with the teacher effect at this project. We feel it does both of those things. A second piece that I've already mentioned is the technology. And within the technology, we're looking at a vendor filling that position. K through twelve is doing their test pilot right now and from all that I've heard from the people in this, in the district is that they're doing a very good job. Tiffany Wilson is in her second or third week of doing her tour around the district and her test run as our integration curriculum specialist. And I know she's putting forth a lot of effort and she's figuring some things out for us, which is great. And of course, Tammy is in the break fix area and she continues to do that job and keep our health test tickets down to the minimum. So next year, whether it's Tiffany, if this works out, somebody will be in that integration tech curriculum now. We're assuming that there isn't going to be any significant difference, but we will continue to test run for the next six weeks on the K through twelve technology people being in here. And if it works out with Tiffany, she would be the curriculum infrastructure, excuse me, integration person and Tammy would stay in that department. Two other minor changes that we'd like to somewhat promote people into areas is Jody Mundingler to help out and kind of be the chairperson of all the counselors. That will alleviate some of the people services responsibilities. With Ann's departure, we're looking at how can we make that job doable with a new person in that role, trying to learn everything. And some of the things that we have to look at is switching some things around. And Jody has stepped forward and said she would love to help out with the guidance counselors, the school counselors, excuse me. And so we'll look to tap her on the shoulder and kind of like be a chairperson. And also Scott Jorland has shown a great interest and we feel it is almost imperative that he be the director of the U.S.C.O. Career Academy. And that he is very interested in taking on board the leadership role. Of course, once again, with Ann leaving, that filled the void there and it takes something away from that people services job. And Scott Jorland has vested interest and a real interest in doing that and has already stepped forward and has some great ideas. So that's kind of the overview of the big changes in staffing that we're looking at for next year. There are some other minor tweaks going on. Casey Shield will be more at the middle school doing business, doing more business classes at the middle school. Of course, there'll be other minor tweaks as we go on in the way.
Buildings and grounds is the second category. This would include operations, utilities and capital improvements.
So what's always been brought forward is why do we put utilities in buildings and grounds? It can be its own separate entity, but what we want to do, and we've talked to Doug about this and I think he understands and appreciates and is very receptive to the ideas that whatever he saves in that area with his efficiencies, that goes back into his budget before it goes back into the regular, into the general fund. So we think that it takes about nine hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars to do the utilities and the things that need to be done in buildings and grounds on a year-to-year basis. We've tried to increase that, above that, anything above that allows him to do some capital improvements. And, you know, we're working, maybe not daily, but pretty often the three of us are sitting down and looking at that. So that's where we're at with buildings and grounds.
Technology, which includes software and hardware?
Kind of mentioned it already, K through twelve technology. As a vendor, comes in at a different price structure that we feel is better suited... As a vendor, comes in at a different price structure that we feel is better suited for our district. We already talked about Tiffany and Tammy. They've identified some basic priority one needs for next year and that money for the year-to-year things, again, the licensures, the E rates, the things that take up, you know, that takes up about a quarter of a million dollars a year in and of itself, that gives them the ability to do a couple of things that they prioritize for next year, which is the, the big one is the switch, the core, core switch that needs to be done next year because we're just, it's too small. We need to get a bigger one.
Curriculum includes instructional materials, textbooks, curriculum running, and staff development.
That increase obviously is the literacy project money that goes under curriculum. So her, that budget goes up from last year based on that project. We have two main things that we're concentrating on, two high priorities that have been identified by the administration. One of them is the literacy project, the other one is the multi-H classrooms out at Wayne. So those take a priority and they're a priority, there's going to be some financial obligation with that.
Next is schools, and this includes the individual school budgets, the athletic and curricular and summer school. There's really no change here. Next is district administration. This is going to include the board of education budget, human resources, legal, any, the regalese, policy costs, the superintendent budget, and all of our budget costs.
And that $25,550 should look familiar because that's the number we built in for the salary compensation statement. That's the only increase.
So that's including the O.L.A. as well?
Yes, that's what we're putting in. Sorry, I should know my question. Open enrollment, you know what this is and that little bit up to the side is the amount we talked about being per pupil increase for next year. This is the special ed, interfund, special education interfund transfer that we talked about. It's got a zero increase because that's what we're hoping we can get it to do with Go for Zero increase. Transportation, and you've been hearing about this for months now, this is contracted student transportation fuel and parent contracts. So we know it's a built-in amount and we're going to add to our app. Fiscal includes our copy releases, our SLO, the crossing guards, all of our non-benefit insurances, our audit costs, costs of doing business office, business, like all of our checks, things like that, and then our second chance tuition. The increase in this one is due to the addition of a nurse. And this is state and federal grants like Title I and Title II. We see no increase because we have no pool order next year yet. They usually run the same year-to-year results, it's a change, but we won't know that for our final budget for work. And this is that total, negative 135,271, which was our starting number from the beginning. And that would be a negative 0.69% change overall. And these are some of the bigger unknowns. We don't know our membership count for summer or for September yet. Those are part of formulas. We don't know our open enrollment. It's going to have a big impact on our expenditure and revenues. We will have staffing changes from now until we open the doors in the fall probably. And we are still waiting for the charter school grant. Questions?
You made a comment about the debt service fund, that that doesn't change our numbers, that that stays in the budget. You mentioned the first, the, there's capital improvements and refinancing, the first one down in 2011. I forget the dollar amount in that particular piece, but when that paid off in 19, is it possible within the budgetary process to take the funds you're paying on that loan and put towards the unfunded pension liability B5 that we did to take that out soon?
Yeah.
It was 300 and...
Do you want to know if it's possible to do a clean payment?
Correct. I don't want to pay down the pension.
Yeah. If it was a safe trust fund, we could. I'm not sure.
Because it's only at 1.7%, which is going to probably have inflation at that point in time. But then otherwise, if you don't use it to pay it down faster, it comes back to the budget.
Correct.
Out of the B and G budget, how much of that roughly, you mentioned one, I forgot, utilities? In the B and G budget of nine... 550?
Oh, we actually put it down here, it was like 36,680, 36,680.
That was the increase, but what's the total?
Oh, he had like 550.
550, okay.
It took me about 550, right?
550, yeah. What do you look like next year for short-term lowering?
I don't need it.
Really? Thanks. I'm looking at it on a vault.
I won't know until we clean this this year because that's going to tie some money into the balance.
The surplus of deficit will dictate on the salary. Surplus reduces it, that's true.
We're hoping a little bit of surplus, hoping that's not going to be much. We won't know until we get our cash flow.
The other issue that we won't know about good is the, after you guys deal with the administration. Yeah, I don't know. I'm guessing you have to come higher.
When you have less elementary teachers, how's that affect the kids? Just because you have less kids, you need less teachers?
Yeah, pretty much. I mean, we...
It doesn't affect them because you have less kids?
Well, that's, that's, yes. We, there, every year there seems to be bubbles. So when you go through kindergarten through fifth grade, there's a bubble in fourth grade and then goes to fifth grade, and the bubble goes away. So there's some give in any elementary with the different bubbles that happen from time to time. A bubble can happen on the other end. It can be a shortfall. So normally you have four classes in a given grade, it might be three only in this grade. So the bubble can work both ways. But at this time, given the different bubbles that have surfaces and, you know, some of the reconfigurations and multi-H out at Wayne, we can reduce three elementary school positions.
You made your reference to class size, Greg?
Yep.
That's what changed, that's going to keep the range on.
It's not going to change it drastically, but it's trying to keep it within that range that we've talked about. You're never going to have it perfectly, it's always going to be a range, and it's going to keep within that range. So obviously less teachers is going to raise the class size, but it certainly is within the man and woman.
Any other questions? Budget review? Okay. We're on to item 12C. Grace?
I think Mr. Rampin gets email to all these contacts that we had with DPI regarding getting someone to take the pro and con side of the common court presentation. Last item, he had an email to, he said, following DPI's court. Last week however, and he also indicated Emily Adamson was almost at her due date with her baby. Emily did have her baby last week, Monday, so she won't be back at work until August. I don't know exactly when in August. So, and apparently Emily is a person who would get someone from DPI to do the communication. However, she did say, she made some suggestions that we could get someone from CISA 6 or another district superintendent. But she also indicated that she asked, if Tim could be okay if she'd contact Mr. Smazal and would she encourage? Did she contact you? They contacted you okay. And she also talks about a tool kit that has been available to superintendents to use in situations like this. And the tool kit, I went on DPI's website and it talks about the tool kit to assist administration. And it says what you can do to help communicate accurate information on the foresting standards. And one of the bulleted items was host a community forum. Also messaging points for community meetings. So I guess what I have to do is ask you again if anybody from administration will take the pro and con part of it.
We've all along said, Grace, that we don't think that that's our role.
All right.
If we're going to have a pro and con and bring out outside people in, that's not our role. At some point, do you want to have a board workshop with the administration and talk about it? Fine.
I'm thinking more of the public. We want to inform more about the common court that's going on. The public is looking for information. If you don't want to do that, that's fine. I am going to go ahead and do another presentation on common court. And if you don't want me to use the school, that's the high school audit board, that's fine too. But I really think this district owes something to the community members, especially parents, who have a lot of questions about common court and aren't getting them answered. And I think it's almost a district's responsibility. I mean, the taxpayers and parents are paid everybody's salary here. They're funding these standards through their taxes and they aren't getting answers. So if that's your decision, then I will just go ahead and I would like to use a high school audit plan for our community members and the public. You don't want to do that, just let me know. No, I was watching everybody sweep the old office here today and I took the old office also when I became a board member. And you stayed in there, you swear to uphold your best constitution and the constitution of this country. And one of the basic fundamental rights we have in our constitution is freedom of speech. And I don't think freedom of speech should be held back from any board member or from any community member who may really want to ask questions about common court and so far aren't getting them from this district as a whole. So I accept your answer, I would like to know if I can use the school on.
Grace, I have a question.
Sure.
Because I know if parents have a question about what their children's curriculum or what the subjects are that they're studying or the intent, why wouldn't they be asking their teachers to explain further? I know Mr. Baker has had some really good points addressing things that he has seen with his children as far as their improvements with their specific topics. And I know we have some community members who are also educators, maybe not in this district, but in other districts, and they have very excellent explanations of what the standards are for their particular subject area. And I think when the email from Tim, he did not want to use Mr. Nitsky, who was recommended as the superintendent from West Bend, as well as, I know there was a recommendation about the superintendent from Racine Unified District, also CISA 6, but Tim was not interested in those people at all.
Because he thought if the DPI who is, has everything to do with common court would be the best choice, or someone from our district rather than bring in Ted Nitsky from West Bend. I mean, this is our district, it's not West Bend's district.
But I think it's just a matter of questions related to explanations of common court.
You've never been to a presentation on common court.
I've read a lot of materials about it, including the standards.
Like you haven't been there. And when you are there, you will hear and see the type of questions that are asked.
I'm looking for the truth, and I know the truth, Grace. I don't need the derogatory comments or falsehoods of things that I've read about, so.
Well, again, Mary, if you attend one, you could make...
I don't need to attend those kinds of things. I know what I read, I'm educated, and I know where to look for the accurate information, Grace. So people can attend their choice.
This started from a forum that we had.
Pardon?
It started from a forum about board members wanting to learn more about common court.
Yes, yes.
Well, something Mary has, everyone didn't know what she has. She didn't attend your presentation, but she went and did. There's so much out there.
There's so much out there.
You just spend a weekend...
Correct.
I'm speaking, you can wait.
I have to spend months.
You can wait, I'm speaking.
Mine.
Point work. I would think if there are that many questions out there, Darcy, put like our curriculum director, seeing common court is directly in the curriculum, her phone would be ringing off hook. I would assume if parents did their homework, looked at the administrative team and wondering who was the most directly involved with our curriculum, it would be the director. So, Darcy, how many phone calls do you address roughly on a weekly basis regarding common court? Okay, thank you. What Pastor Eric said early on about the combative nature, trying to reduce that and be a functional board and not a dysfunctional board, you're looking to put a pro and a con, you're looking to pit a pro versus a con. I think what we need to do, it's mostly about education, people need to find out what's going on. They've got questions. Pro and a con, I don't think is the way to peacefully put that together, okay? In my opinion, if we're going to do something, we could do something possibly on a panel discussion. Where you don't have a pro and a con, you have several experts who understand what's going on out there. And why we wouldn't have Ted Nitsky come in, who is, he's excellent, he is really, really well-respected in the area. He's, I think, eight miles away. Now, he's not from here, but as far as a solid resource, Ted is a really solid resource that I would definitely encourage and love to see him step in here and put his input. I think he would be a great candidate as part of a panel. I don't like this pro and con discussion because I think we're setting it up for failure before we even get started when you put pro and con. So from that standpoint, I guess with Tim, I would, I would pick up the ball and try to talk to Ted to bring Ted in to have the discussion because if we can't even get someone from DPI until August to start making a recommendation, that's kind of putting us on too long a period of time if people have all these questions. But like Darcy, I've not gotten a call on common court. I don't know if anyone else here has gotten calls on common court.
Positively. People have talked to me in the community very positively with specific information that they are aware of because they've worked with it.
So I think what, you know, the education is good, but I don't think there's this glaring, these questions. We're not getting here with the questions. If everyone was so scared or so worried or so upset, I would think the administrative team and these board members would be getting a lot of phone calls on a regular basis and not just input, but true questions, well, what is this about common court, et cetera? So I think we should continue to pursue the process under the format of not a pro and a con, but a panel and see what we can do from that standpoint. And I think Ted Nitsky is the perfect person to come up here and speak about common court. This isn't about pro and con, it's just what are the facts? What is the truth? How does it impact this?
If anyone here, I know it's Amy Williams, but you are not enjoying the representation. Very important, the facts are the facts. 147 people there in this special school board meeting. That's a lot of people. We had questions. Questions were coming up. Why they don't call Darcy? We don't know. None of you, you say, oh, we need educated on it. There's a lot of facts out there that we're not aware of. Have you ever watched the hearings that were going on at the gas phone? Have you ever watched them? So, I mean...
I think we've...
But I, excuse me, I think I have my answer from administration and as far as we want to have a presentation. When you say pro and con, the pro and con came in last fall, and I think Heather made the suggestion, why don't we have a pro and con? My idea to have a pro and con.
I didn't say it was.
Well, I mean, anyway.
I like a panel idea. You need a way to have a parent or two parents involved. I like a panel idea, you know, maybe to have a parent or two parents involved, who have some knowledge of it and have experience with their kids, you know, something like that, that might be very beneficial to talk about.
Well, I think the district should have something, but I am going ahead with another presentation.
So let me just clarify a couple of things to board, since we move on. Grace, to answer your question, since September, the answer from administration has been, we want to keep our eye on the target, anything that helps help educate our local kids, we're all in favor for, anything that takes our eye off the target, we don't want to spend a lot of time on. That's been our message since September. It's been out there, that's consistent, that's all we've ever said, mostly from me, but also from the people here. We have asked respectfully on a number of occasions that we be kept out of the emotionally, potentially politically charged area, and let us concentrate on the curriculum and doing the things that we have to do here locally. So that doesn't mean that we're pro, con, for, against, we're just concentrating on the things here locally. And if you choose as a citizen to continue on to do that, that's your right to do that, obviously. As a board, you're bringing up here as a board, are you asking for the board's approval to use this facility for your meeting that you want to have as an individual? Because it's not administration's response, it's the board's response on whether they want to do that. So, you know, again, the board is saying that they want to have a panel discussion. That's the direction that I've heard that this group wants to go. Now, if on her own, Grace wants to go and have a presentation, that's your right to do so. But let's just make sure that we separate the two, so we have...
Oh, yeah.
Clear understanding of what's going on.
This is very good. Now, will the panel discussion that the board is going to have, will it be in the auditorium, so a lot of the public can come to that presentation also?
We just heard Troy's idea, so I'll acquiesce to him, but I would suspect that you'd want to come back in the mayor, the June meeting, and decide how many people you want to have on the panel, and is it going to be moderated? Who's going to moderate it? And have it very well structured. And if that's the case, and the board chooses to do that, obviously, it would be in one of our facilities.
Well, I think that's a good idea. I'm still going to go ahead and slide the presentation, but I mean, I certainly think it would be good to have the public and leaders come to that type of forum and hear more information, and then make their own decisions, so whatever the other wants to do.
If you chose, choose to hold a second common core, pro common core presentation as a community member, I think it's, I think it's conflict of interest that you host it on school rounds, because you are a school board member, okay? You're a citizen, but you're also a school board member, which changes that, the dynamic, which in my opinion, makes it a conflict of interest for you personally to hold it on these grounds.
And that's perfectly all right. I don't have, I don't have a problem giving a different panel.
Okay, you did the board, so I'm sure you're good again.
Oh, yeah.
Is it possible to have whomever Grace is looking to bring in on the panel?
We can discuss that in the next meeting. So, and I'm looking to put that on the May twelve agenda for the panel discussion about common core.
I think that would be a great idea.
Okay, moving on to item twelve D, visionary community survey approval, Mary Miller.
Okay, it was excellent last week, the participation in the community, and I know we got a copy of this, and there were some things that were brought up from the different groups that went around and met with, answered the different categories, and I know the group that I was in wanted, it was an excellent idea to have more of an emphasis on the students, so that was moved to more in the beginning, and so on. So, do you need a recommendation to approve the survey as it is? Okay, I'm hoping to approve the survey. The only thing is, I know when we got the copy, where we had the little graphs, our copy, which is very good, but I know it was hard to differentiate, good, to differentiate the colors so they were more readable, very good. Okay, that was it.
You can see also, you can see the school district's names under this, it's a little small, they were on a slant before we moved them, now they're written horizontally across under each of the bars.
This one you tell them?
Well, just one.
So try to get those a little bit better.
Well, they were bigger because they were on a slant.
Right, I hear you.
Yes, I can.
I believe, didn't they spin it, didn't they change the, change the magnitude of the comment?
I'll see if you can make those, those, a little bit bigger. There are other two minor tweaks as well, and that is, there was one of the graphs like this that wasn't truly in alphabetical order, so it would be consistent. We had to put them, everything in alphabetical order, and then under the cost-saving options, it was brought up by the committee that they wanted to make sure that none of these cost-saving options, which were recommended by the district, so it was pulled it out that that one sentence, the district does not endorse or recommend any of the following options. So the visionary committee members asked for that. So those were the only two things that were tweaked since we got the copy on Saturday morning.
So I knew that we approved these, so we need to go out.
Second.
All in favor?
I have a few questions.
Any questions?
Um, there is one, on page two, it's, and it's brought up...
Of the new one, for the highest one?
Yeah, I think it's either one probably. A specific question under cultural cross indifference that I really would like to see us break out a little bit differently than we have it. Currently, it says, Kwasos was a moving in the right direction, and allows the option to strongly agree, disagree, or strongly agree, or disagree, I should say, or not applicable. And I feel like, I feel like when it's time for us to take all this data and digest it and pull it apart and actually do something with it, without breaking that one, one as one example, apart, the first thing that I, you know, I mentioned this particular question to some other individuals, and the first thing they sent to me was, in what area? Is Kwasos moving in the right direction, in what aspect? Was their response back to me? And I thought, that's exactly where I was going with the two. So for example, it might say, Kwasos was moving in the right direction, and then bullet multiple different areas within the school district, so that when it's time to digest the data, we have, okay, so we're doing well in athletics, but mathematics needs to be a bit stronger, or, I think it's something, but definitely needs to have some of this in some things, so break out of that.
And I will break off that, all those things listed. Maybe it has to do with, you have problem solving, critical thinking, reading, science, social studies.
Well, then, then maybe that how everyone moving in the right direction can be... Because the problem, Mary, is that it's not allowing, parents that have individuals in middle school and elementary school, middle school, and to have a voice to delineate which one they're responding to.
There's a question, there's a narrative piece on the back. And if you want to add comments, they have that ability, and I think, the point I'm trying to, yeah.
Please see, please use the comment section to expand your D E F to a specific school.
Correct, so it's really hit that piece where I think we're covered.
And then comment suggestions to improve the district, um, the culture, the cross indifference, um, a lot of, do bachelor specific schools under, how are the western schools related?
Yeah. After we have the meetings, all the administrators, thank you very much for being no takers that night, we met with Bill afterwards, and that was one of the things that was brought up as a point to look at, to vote into the survey or change in the survey. And Bill's response to that, and you guys can help me out, but it generally was, this isn't about, if you want to know how a school's doing, then the school can put out its own survey to its parents. If you, this is about the people that normally don't respond, or this is the general feeling of how the district is doing, and that's a very global outreach with this survey. And so he suggested that it does not get broken down by school, and that was his thought process on that. Anybody else got, had from what Bill said on, pretty much what he said?
Okay, any other discussion? Okay, take a vote, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Yeah, six oh with Jim Leister standing. Okay, we have Grace and Jim. We have item twelve D, update on ongoing legal issues.
Simply, it continues to move in the right direction. Our part of the legal item is done, we're just waiting for them to finish up their part of it. The wheels of retirement funds and ETFs and all those kinds of things is what they're working on, so it absolutely has no direct bearing on us. We have to wait patiently until that is all figured out, and that does take time, and they will continue to update us, but there is absolutely no reason for us to do anything except wait. And at such time, when it would make sense for Tony to come and give us the final final, we will bring him in at that time. But he did call and let us know on Thursday afternoon that they're still working on it.
Still in her court? Her, her court?
Yeah, it's still in, it's still in her court. My understanding is, is that she's come to terms with the situation, and it's just a matter of now figuring out how to allocate the resources that have been made available to her.
Okay, I'm actually on twelve B. And thirteen A, school nurse proposal, Mr. Smazal.
In your packet, excuse me, in your packet, you have the proposal that was put together from Aurora. Simply, I believe it was last summer, Paula Carlton and I met, and we talked about what ifs, what, what could potentially happen, what could we partner on, what can we do better? And one of the things that we talked about was the school nurse. We talked about having clinic on staff, we talked about better wellness programs, we talked about community guards, we talked about, we talked about, feel up to play sixty, and a lot of those things have come to fruition, and this is another opportunity for us to get a school nurse that will be here on campus at one of the five buildings or six locations, full-time, school year, starting next year, and they're going to pick up, as they see, what they say is half the cost. So basically, for twenty-six thousand dollars, they're willing to pick up, excuse me, twenty-six thousand nine hundred and forty dollars, they're willing to pick up half the cost and provide us with a school nurse, full-time, which is absolutely outstanding and wonderful of them to offer this. And included in that, they're also asking, they're throwing in professional health consultant, in other words, Paula Carlton will also be available to help us with wellness-type activities, which, given our scenario with insurance, is a double bonus. So I'm very happy and thankful that Aurora has stepped forward and wants to partner with us, and if we can make this work, this could be a great opportunity for us at a very low cost to provide a service that, quite frankly, we can no longer not have in this district. It's a necessity we need for.
Need motion to approve it?
Yes.
Any discussion? Any discussion? Okay, take a vote, all in favor? Sorry, it's ready, go college.
Mrs. Mary Miller? Mr. Leister?
Yes.
Mr. Hanson?
Yes.
Mr. Fisher? Mr. Grace? Yes. Mr. Alex? Yes.
Okay, pass seven oh. Okay, at this time, for a motion to move to closed session?
I move to closed session.
Second, first and second?